Oh, I don't know how to. I have to look it up because I've never.
Yeah, you can watch the select board. You can type it on Facebook YouTube. Okay, here we are. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's see, we have a call. Let's begin. It's 6:30. What do we have on the line at this point?
Nobody right now.
Okay. Any adjustments on the agenda?
I have one.
Take a look at the minutes. Comments, questions?
That was way off.
Why don't we accept the minutes?
Seconded, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, running my Zoom meeting.
Hello, hello. Any changes to the order? We want to do the agenda. I'd like to get rid of the town farm bill thing right off, if that's all right, guys. We have nothing to report. That's the cell phone. Yeah. I did get a note from John B C that he thinks they're just, it's just preliminary stuff. They're just starting to line things up and they haven't made a plan yet. So until we hear otherwise, that issue, I think, is at rest.
The only thing I would
Yeah.
Is all we know that we can respond to is what's in the town plan moment.
Right.
And if all we said was send them a section that deals with the town plan. If they're planning, they might as well know at least what the, what the town plan says about so progress.
Okay. So if you just pull that piece out and send it to them?
It's just a, it's just a courtesy to let them know what's in the plan.
Okay, I'll take care of it. Unless the court wishes.
Whatever.
Whatever. Tucker.
Yeah.
All right, so it's an idea. Okay, 2025 town plan. Actually, no, I want to skip ahead to sunny. Any disagreement?
No.
Okay. We don't have anything new. We're kind of waiting. Got a couple of issues, I suppose, that could be discussed at some point. We can do that a little later. All right, the town plan. Here we are. So I don't know if Steve's going to make it on or not. Has there been, anybody been getting any message from Steve in the past week?
Not since he sent that message saying he wasn't including Jay's write-up.
Yeah.
That was yesterday.
But he did have the latest version of my thing, so yeah.
Dan's is, Dan's is mine, I should.
Oh, okay, because I, I had asked you whether you think I got it right.
Oh, you mean with the addition?
No, with the, yeah, with describing the boundaries of the the area.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, you know, the I, I reread what I have put in the latest thing, and I think I'd like to take another crack at separating out goals and policies in the, the, on the overall section of the land use. Not, not each, each of the areas, I think, are fine. Yeah. But there's a, there were goals and Jim had correctly pointed out that the, the, some goals sounded like policies and some policies sounded like goals. So the way I saw it was I just put goals and policies at the top and, you know, but it, but I think that's probably not the way to go. I, because, you know, so I, I had to spend a little more time on it because there's about a dozen of them, maybe a little more. Yeah. I can, I can sort them out. I think it's not a huge deal, but I can just let Steve know and just go back to that. So people are okay with that. Yeah, well, I should take a look at that this weekend. I said Steve, chapter two, chapter three, chapter six, after eight. And I don't know if we've gotten that back from him yet. Jack, do we get anything from today?
Yes, from yesterday.
Yesterday, yesterday. So what was it? Chapter which?
One, three, six, and eight.
One, three, seven, one. It's definitely, he definitely got that.
Yeah.
You can say it's not two. Two.
Two, oh, I'm sorry. Two, three, six, and what I said.
Can I add that I sent John, broker, some questions having to do with chapter three.
Yeah.
Water and road maintenance.
Okay.
I'm waiting for.
Yeah, he's odd. I guess he knows a couple of things about water. It's mentioned in the ass. And certainly ones in, but yeah.
It looks like he has most of the changes, at least in two, were goals, same as districts is there. Yeah, so that's all. He does have that in, as updated.
Oh, we got 1022. Okay. Yeah.
We're getting close.
Oh, we're close. Maps, of course, are a challenge for Jay, but Jay, how are you making out with the maps? You need any help?
The detailed ones, I'm, I'm just waiting for feedback from anybody to make sure that all those little parcels. One Dan mentioned was the parcel that on Route 12.
Demon Road.
Yeah, exactly. I have to, I have to color one more parcel. But other than that.
It was pretty good.
The details are done. The, the large map, I've got to get back to Pete Fellows and the two rivers to have him create the overall map. Really show the details in detail, but it will just get everything.
Okay.
That's the only thing that, as far as the maps go.
Yeah, once you explain that, it conforms to everything I've done. Okay. Wow. What will we ever do? We don't have this working for us. Yeah, okay. So.
Hey, let me, let me think of that. The other map, I don't think there's, I didn't think there's any changes to the, to the wetlands or the fisheries or all the other things.
Yeah.
I suppose I could just check in and make sure that.
Yeah, the checking with who?
Fellows or.
Okay. Yeah, the, the carers corresponded, especially where they cross the state highways. Why we didn't, that would help explain why we designated areas, you know, non-rural and rural. Well, what I, what I did is taking a look at three. If you guys want to do that, get down to the goals, I want to make sure that I'm doing the right stuff. You know, I mean, I'm a new guy. I'm laughing because I didn't, I didn't do a very good job on those. And am I, am I doing the goals?
So your water resources, is that where you are?
Do you want to go to three or do you want to do two first?
Well, we go to two. Waiting for it to load. Come on.
It looks pretty good. Yeah, so what I did was on the history part, so each, but each.
Yeah, I did. I didn't change anything up there.
All right.
Maybe if any language change, it'll be in a different color.
I checked with Stacy Browling.
Did you?
About current use programs, and I have that data.
You do?
Okay.
Have you got it there? Is it simple?
I can.
Can you edit it in on a?
Yes.
Yes, it's.
Yeah. Do you want to see what it is? Is it mine? I mean, if, I, I think I can find it.
Just curious.
It's quite remarkable, as you probably remember.
I mean, how much?
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I was shocked. So what are we looking at? I'm looking at agriculture number, the goals, policies, and recommendations. That looks good to me, too.
Yeah.
I'm looking specifically for possible inconsistencies with one, but I don't see anything.
Yeah, I didn't look at it that way.
No, that's, that's, that's fine. Yeah, I think it's.
By the way, I did ask about COVID inventory.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. These guys are so busy. They're out of their minds. They're trying to catch up with all the stuff. And they're not, no one's gotten back to me about how many culverts we have. I just, I just take it out. We have lots of culverts. I could say that when we get to the roads.
There's a lot of new culverts.
Yeah.
What about your wife?
So there we are. Well, this is not the way I spoke it. Yeah, it's in there, but it's in blue.
Yeah.
And I intended to the only thing I wanted to keep in there was that the water resources goal and the groundwater goal, the groundwater policies in looking at this. It doesn't need to be there. And groundwater recommendations. I don't think we need to send a letter to the select board about recommendations with groundwater. I mean, I think that's.
Where, where are you?
I happen to be on page 61.
And you're in chapter three or?
Yeah.
Yeah, three. Pages didn't come along.
Groundwater policies and recommendations. Okay, at the bottom there.
Over, yeah, okay.
It should be just groundwater policies.
Groundwater.
And so overarching goal, groundwater goal, and then groundwater policies and groundwater recommendations. I mean, it's contained there. What, what we need to pay attention to? Comments, questions?
I, it seems, I just read what Kate had.
Yeah.
I find it very difficult to believe that there's only 75 acres of wetlands and heartland. And there's only 19 acres with conservation easement. It doesn't make sense to me. So I'm wondering if it's a definition. So, so Stacy's definition of what a wetland is and what we have in the document is a wetland. They better jive or else, you know, we're going to run into a problem with that.
Where we got to find that information?
Well, I think we got to go back, or maybe Kate, if she goes back to Stacy to see what's, what's her definition of a wetland. Because I know on our big map with the forest blocks on it, there's a lot of wetlands that are in there, a lot more than 19 acres.
Well, it's 19 acres out the end of, I would imagine, out on the end of, beginning of Route 12 in four corners.
Well, it, it depends on what the definition of wetland is. I'm just telling you, on the map, it looks a lot more.
Yeah, it sounds, yeah. 19 acres.
Yeah. I don't want to be an alarmist or make more work for us, but
No, we got it.
Better we try it between us before we go out and someone says, well, gee, I own 200 acres of conservation easement.
Well, then it's especially important to not be working with two definitions.
Right, so, so at the state level, Vermont's wetlands are defined as those areas in the state that are inundated by surface or groundwater with a frequency sufficient to support plants and animals that depend on saturated, preseasonly saturated soil conditions for growth and reproduction. These areas are commonly known as ponds, bogs, bends, marshes, wet meadows, shrub swamps, and wood swamps. They often occur in association with lakes, ponds, rivers, and streams, creating transition areas between dry land and.
Okay, so I'll email her back saying, where do those definitions?
Yeah.
It may have to do with what people have applied to, if they were, you know, rather than what it is.
Yeah. 75 acres.
If I can take a tenant.
I got to have the bottom.
Yeah, I got a little pond online. Tapkins, I suppose. Well, I think the point's been made.
Page on wetland identification and delineation. These all come in the Department of Environment.
Come from the Department of what? Department of Conservation?
Yeah. I'm learning something.
Yeah.
There's three parameters: wetlands, hydrology, hydrophytic vegetation, hydro soils.
Who? Wow.
The Army Corps of Engineers will also have a, they have a federal manual. They show the weapons.
Jeez, how many acres is sitting in that?
I think, I think the natural resource map has that mapped out. I know they have hydro soils.
Is a hydro soil.
It's got something to do with its water content.
Yeah.
But it has to do with a, in a city level and what happens on a piece of land, what it can do with limitations on. It indicates, indicative of a presence of something. I can't remember what that presence is, but.
Certainly, yeah, certainly. Okay, so what do you think about this? Do you okay with this idea of, you know, we're just, all I did was yank the recommendations and I yanked the policies. The policies are based on our conversation last week. Didn't we agree that the policies really?
Yeah, we did.
They're not helpful.
No, no, the goals.
The goals we need.
No, no, the goals are, the policies are what will be the tangibles that will, will be used. The goals are more aspiration.
Phil had something to say.
Phil, you got something? Well, just your comments, you know, the conservation. Trying to identify. The town has to play by the state. So, so the towns are aware of of water quality.
Yeah.
And what it has to do with as far as and I think, I'm not sure if it's 2030 or there are dates associated with getting any natural water connected broker to make sure that we don't have any runoff from roads into them. So when you're asking, certainly require, it's like, or be required, it's like a few things. There's activity in right now.
Okay.
Jay, this, you see, for example, in housing, we had is a, a goal increasing of affordable housing, but that's not tangible.
Right.
I mean, I took those out and I put in six policies. They can actually be actionable. Someone can work on that. They can, they can become implementable policy if we so desire as a town.
So I'll go back and fix mine. The.
I don't have any there.
Not right now.
Yeah, I didn't have.
I see.
That's a little hard to fix.
Because I didn't.
It's kind of a Steve's app file now, right? Steve's.
I thought the goals were there.
But we're doing.
No, this is a Microsoft Word file.
We're doing.
I brought it up in roles.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, well, because I found, I found the key. I found a key in here where you convert it back to Microsoft Word before you send it off, and that's what I did.
Well, go ahead and do, do what you think is right.
Michelle, what did we write? What, I thought we had a lengthy discussion about the about goals and policies, the use of the word. I thought we envisioned policies in that we wanted them to be actionable, not aspiration.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And I think the, they might not be in the housing section because they were so explicitly in the land use section.
Yeah.
Having that we wanted to eliminate the possibility of, of arguing that there were some inconsistencies.
And there's clearly overlap, because if you look at the first one, you've got foster an increase in the town's affordable housing stock by designating areas of the town. And then you've got separated villages, mixed use, rural residential, which allow higher density housing or housing clusters, whether single family, multifamily, small apartment, elder care communities. So that's something that if we wanted to put as a policy, we could. Another one is ongoing collaborative efforts between the town with federal and state housing agencies, community land trusts, and housing development corporations, regional planning commissions, community action agencies, agencies on aging, Vermont Affordable Housing Coalition. So those are things that we can.
Well, you had, it's sort of.
Yeah.
Recommendation.
A-actually do.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it like.
No, it isn't there.
Okay.
It isn't there. It didn't get in.
Okay, okay. There's no blue in the, oh, a little bit. Did you want some comments on your, on the groundwater? Well, I made it there. I mean, no, what?
The, you know, I
let's get back to mine.
So I had an overarching goal, groundwater goal. I mean, it says in sure, we've used those words in several places, groundwater policies.
Yeah.
As we look at this, should these policies remain in the document?
Yeah, I thought so. The, with three, maybe just change the word should to shell.
Yeah.
That would be, you know.
Okay.
And the other ones, one and two, you don't need, if you don't have more than one bullet under it, you don't need, it can just be one.
Indeed.
Eliminate the A and just go, put the colon there and just do it.
Yeah.
It's just.
You hadn't edited.
Yes, it's just an editorial comment.
Okay. We'll clean that up.
So you're doing editing then, it sounds like.
No, I'm not editing. I'm kicking it over from editing to what's the second one down? It's not editing. Hang on. Suggesting.
Okay.
So when I sit, when I use suggesting, then I can draw lines through and do all that stuff and everybody gets to see it. Amend highway ordinance policy by adding standards to limit the grade of and control runoff from driveways that can themselves be a source of erosion problems.
Yeah, you said you were going to skinny it down because we want the plan to be substantive, tangible, not to have a lot of verbores, right, about, hey, this is nice, maybe we ought to do this. No, it's supposed to be a usable document that provides guidance.
Right.
After it's been accepted by the town. So, I mean, I do think we can really skinny it down so that someone can go do it and understand what the town is supportive of, what it's desirable. Can I do this? Do I need to talk to someone about doing this? Oh, no, can't do this. And, yeah, I mean, in our introductions, we, that's where I, I think we put a lot of the narrative, if you will, the goals, the aspirations, but that's limited to a paragraph or two.
This is, yeah, this is beyond the preference.
Yeah, yeah, yes, at the, at the at the opening of the chapter.
Yep.
You set the table, then you try to substantiate it, whether it's with numbers or facts. And then you say, well, here's our recommended policies.
So actionable answers.
I think so.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, that's more reading out and doing. It's a key word.
Because we don't want people to read it.
Yeah.
In, in, in utilizing.
Okay.
Actually, I have a piece of information that we have drawn out. Hydro soils, hydro soils harbor anaerobic activity.
It's pee.
Yeah. Yeah. It depletes oxygen. Good for the animals. It pres, helps preserve metals. On the other hand, it promotes gangrene and other nasty skin infections. So I guess we won't be mining that awful speed.
All right, well, I, I don't want to discuss frankly, number three, until I go back and worry about it. I'm sorry, but.
I know.
But it's just not.
I, I didn't see, nothing jumped out at me.
Yeah.
So. You know, you think about the, the energy one. It was a well-written document, but it probably was off point from what we wanted to convey in the town plan.
Well, yeah, except that I had to look at the information from two rivers. And the list of things, you may recall, the list of things they wanted in there are all in there. So there, there's no, there's very little editing that can be done in energy because they, they want you to have that in there. Well, we did share that they're, what they've sent us, but they, because they, they sent us a very wrong thing. And we did decide that there was.
Sure.
It went way beyond the.
Well, yeah.
What we needed in the town.
The requirements that are sitting in there.
The requirements that are sitting in there are the stuff their handout or their information says that we have to put into the town plan. So we better get that in front of us.
But if anyone, I guess they were, I've had discussions, I guess, former energy.
Yeah.
Committee people, but I said, come to our meetings if you think anything's missing out of it. May I just add, so you've probably been talking to. Yeah, everyone who picked up a turkey supper was whaling. But she's concerned that by now, some of the status out of date. Yes, but I wonder. I went, I looked at it again, and I couldn't, nothing jumped out at me as being out of date, unless there's some new things that are that we are. And we wouldn't be aware of.
Yeah.
So yeah, certainly, that's what I told her, I said, if look, if there's certain. This is something that a danger is a newer statistic or something, let us know, and we'll certainly update it, so.
And and let's don't forget that when we lay this in front of the regional commission, they're probably going to do some correcting for this.
They might, are they not? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, they'll come back. So here's a, for instance, it says current annual total amount of energy consumed by town of Hartland. In twenty seventeen, total energy consumption in the state of Vermont was forty million megawatts, mega, was it, was it M W H?
Mega watt.
Yeah.
Mega watt, maybe one hour.
Make one hours. That's twenty seventeen. Yeah. I thought it was a little bit too hard to both find it, whatever.
But they know.
Who knows?
Two rivers.
I know, we don't know.
They ought to know. They aren't going to send it back and tell us to go look at it.
Is this weird?
I don't know.
Section. Energy.
Energy.
Particular. No, no, no. You you do.
Yeah.
But she was pointing out that almost all the stuff that was that's in the town plan, we put in a few years ago, and the latest thing that was available then was twenty seventeen, and she says there's more stuff available now, it's all updated, so. It says twenty, there's twenty twenty data, maybe it's maybe the twenty twenty data is good. I'm sure it changes by the hour. So we don't worry about that. Talking about twenty seventeen. No, it says twenty twenty and twenty seventeen. Or should we at least got it up to twenty twenty? I I. Where does it say twenty twenty? There's a, read in there somewhere, I just read it. You found that in there. I don't see it in there at all. Oh, this is for twenty twenty for the town. So twenty, so. Yeah, but that's for the town, not the state. It was the first sentence. We've been at this for a while. Maybe I'll go play it right now. You feel the the energy committee is gone.
Correct.
Never to return.
It's not coming back anytime soon. Yeah, I I like your idea of relying on your rivers, they have folks that are interview folks.
Yeah, I think we took their advice last time, well, we did trim it down.
Yeah, we had a good presentation. But isn't it a good idea to have an energy machine? Or given the politics, is it difficult?
The politics got rid of it, I assume.
Got it.
It was quite a journey to attend to.
Well, the others. It's also listed in the duties for the planning commission. And so like we have Tom, but if anybody asks, well, yeah. State Ray's sacred plan, it should just that. Here's a full-time job.
Which is an increase. Generation, have to be careful with the terms here.
So then the que- the open question is, do we have too much information? If we just take this section, send it to, tell them to look it over and send it back to us. Now, guys, I don't know.
No, I know, the the, you know, that's always, you you get arguments both ways, you know, that the there's state guidance and regional guidance that these sections should be in it. And then we assign, you know, different committees in town, give a lot of the feedback, and they all say, do a conscientious job, and so you end up with a lot, you know, and so. I don't know if it's still in effect, but a number of years ago, that Two Rivers charged for helping us write the town plan, if you remember with 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 Mr. Geiger and others. And I don't know how much we want to go back, and I'd rather ask them to do maps than I would to, you know, to to do energy specs. So I I that answers your question of what we can ask.
Well, it led me to lead me to another question. They're going to charge us for looking at this thing before they send it back?
What thing?
The town plan. If we send them the town plan, they have to look at it and send it back to us.
But it's a finished product.
Yeah, I think I think this is an overlap between select board and planning commission because they, we, the town pays Two Rivers dues.
Yeah.
And what's included in the dues and what isn't. So that's, again, maybe something for the select board down. But the worst is that it's gonna, I think there's nothing, there's nothing off in that I can see in the town plan. So the worst, the only thing that we see, can we make it better by just calling sections up? And I, you know, so that's going to be pretty much in the eye of the beholder, isn't it?
Well, we're clear as to the requirements, though.
You said, yeah.
Yeah, well, well, the sections, yeah, there's requirements, but I I don't think it gets too specific about, you know.
Oh, about the energy?
Yeah, I mean, I've been concerned with redundancy all along, and so there's plenty of sections that I could, but, you know, you don't want to throw out any. Yeah, I appreciate it.
It has to be. Yeah, I I was just thinking. I could send what I.
We're just airing on the side of of verboce.
Uh, can I send it out to you guys again? Or maybe I never did send it to you guys. And if you get a look at it, then you can decide what it is, we can pluck and we can't. Would that be good?
What, I'm sorry, what are you doing?
So everything I looked up left defined, so I could get review chapter six.
Oh.
I checked it against what
Okay.
The planning commission said had to be in there.
Okay, I see.
So if I send that out to everybody, as I probably should have done. Then we can have a tells a conversation about what we can strike. Is that okay with that?
Okay, so you're going to send us.
I'm going to send.
What the regional commission says we need to have in the town plan.
Correct.
Send us what we've drafted so far for the town plan. And we can, we we can then have a conversation on what we remove based on
Correct.
Minimum requirements.
Correct, chapter six. Chapter six. That'll help us get that.
Do do remember, Dave.
What?
We talked to them two years ago.
Yeah.
We we started this before you were on the commission.
Right.
And so the data isn't like it's ten-year-old data, you know, goes only goes back a few years.
It was two years ago. Started this two years ago. It seems like.
When you actually, you guys were actually able to read once a month.
Well, a lot of this stuff is is just pulled up.
Yeah.
Previous town plans and.
I'm just lying.
Yeah.
All right. So then the others, maybe you want to take a cruise down to chapter eight. And that would be on page one ten. Pretty small chapter.
No, no, wait, economic development. Which one did you say?
That's nine.
Yeah.
It was, it's a inter-regional context.
Hey, okay.
Talking to about the other towns.
Okay.
Because we're required to put something in there.
Yes, that's. I think it's statutory.
Yeah.
So it's only three pages. So we just pick the surrounding towns, and I don't think that's changed much from previous town.
No, it says West Rogers Town Plan was adopted in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Somebody put a gold, yeah, but those are gold policy, that's good.
Are those all right?
Yeah.
Yes, I glued all up. Okay, and now. So it's goal and policies. The goal is to work with neighboring towns in the region to encourage good land use and environmental policy that benefits the citizens of our. That's a context call, regional context calls. Hartland shall continue to participate in the development of plans that address regional issues through the regional planning commission. The town encourages continued communication and cooperation between Hartland and. The town encourage.
What?
On something like that.
I I would say rather than encourage, so this is what we want to do. We do it through cooperation. We're not encouraging it. We expect it to be done.
Town will continue communication.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And then, is there anything you wanted to talk about with chapter nine?
No, we did, we had a, you know, we did it previously.
Yeah.
Came up one of the first things, I mean, I took a meat leave for that section.
Yeah. And so we're good happy with that.
Yeah, because again, a lot of this stuff gets so addressed in the land use section, so.
Right, I I I was going to say perhaps the biggest thing we did is the whole mixed use.
Yes.
Is clearly an undertaking of.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right, and so the the big you know, the key thing I did in the in the economic development policy is that economic development, Hartland should be limited and restricted to the, as defined in the town plan, so. I just, you know, it's basically a reference to other parts of the town plan, and don't get into anything that could be construed as a contradiction or or vagus.
Now, in that, we had some conversations. So we developed the areas. We have an industrial area. We haven't. Are there commercial things that we want to have in a particular place? My thought is all the towns, many places around town, they have these storage facilities. Um, do, is that something that can be in mixed use, or do we want it in the industrial area?
I don't think we enumerated.
No, we haven't discussed it.
Beyond commercial in in mixed use, and so do you want to allow some commercial and not other commercial? We we did some.
We mentioned passing that we got like a small community store or something's cool.
Yeah.
Or would you want a storage facility down there? Or would you rather have it over in the industrial area?
Isn't isn't our priority to increase housing?
Yeah.
If it's to do that, then why would you ever allow storage?
Yeah, well, we haven't said.
Well. But well, the 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 definition of of home occupation precludes storage, and so that takes care of the rural areas.
You.
Someone, remember, there's only going to be someone who wants to construct a storage facility somewhere in town.
Right.
Now, so I guess so that the discussion is what we designated as mixed use and rural residential, which is what we're trying to encourage housing there for sure.
Yeah.
But whether we would also want to, you know, we were pretty restrictive with the businesses that were going to be allowed in mixed use, and we didn't include storage.
We didn't.
We didn't.
Would you say, well, you can't do it either?
I didn't say we can't, no, I I just picked, you know, what was there, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a.
I mean, industrial defines itself, does it not?
Wouldn't think.
Commercial does. Commercial is different.
Here's the thing, that's pretty tricky. You can't say if you wanted to make a list, it said the things that had to go in industrial, so including but not limited to, because we could never enumerate everything we did not want in mixed use, but would be okay in industrial. So if we want to provide examples that come to mind, I think I think that, I don't know how it would be perceived, but but by saying, here are some examples, but by no means.
Let me just, because I didn't look hard at industrial, but I'm just trying to think about whether the language in there was pretty inclusive, that sort of could easily be taken. I don't recall any any prohibitions of industrial. We only really have two industrial zones, and the pink one is a tri-state. And what is tri-state? And that's easy to get to, so you don't want to start putting storage facilities in the rural district, certainly not near my house.
No, they could, they they could.
The question is whether we do want to, what I hear you saying, is the question is, but might we want to allow construction of storage facilities in mixed use areas?
No, I'm saying, might we want, or even not, might we not want to say that storage facilities are in the industrial area?
Sure, I mean, there's plenty of room there. Yeah, well, basically, what somebody's looking at this, if it doesn't say you can't do it, apparently fairly interpreted.
Our emphasis was all on habitation or high structures.
Right.
But it had no preclusions in in. That'll require a little bit of careful rewording to.
Well, let's incorporate. Let's think about it. Does it, it takes up so much land.
That would be, that would be in the chapter one, where you put that. You wouldn't put that in housing, because in housing, we say, we're encouraging it in mixed use. Now you're looking at a prohibition to to want of the areas.
Well, my sense is, this is a, forgive me for waxing philosophical for a second. This particular plan is going to have a life afterwards that is not going to be, I expect, not going to be uh, something that gets stuck on a shelf, we don't worry about it until a problem arises. It's going to become something that we want to make sure that we're managing the development in certain areas, and saying that we don't want this here.
That's all we do.
Yeah, yeah, it's all right, I mean, that's all we can do right now.
Or you can say, we do want it here. Well, the industrial, I mean, here's.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got the industrial area up there, it says these three areas, there's, you know what they are, are designated as appropriate for industrial growth. The purpose of the proposed industrial areas is to provide local employment opportunities of an industrial nature to expand the tax base, enable commercial uses that specifically serve the industries or their employees.
Commercial uses.
Yeah, commercial uses, so pretty much, I read that as pretty much anything goes, but.
Yeah, could we say, call it an industrial commercial area?
No, no, it should be industrial with without preclusions.
Because we do have other we were a little more generous in the twelve and four. Interchange area and in the, at the, and then in the I ninety-one.
Well, it just came to mind that that was something that could eat up a lot of land, we might want to allow for people to build on.
Yeah, well, we spent a lot of time on the I ninety-one interchange area about trying to encourage a housing project.
If, if you think about it, though, if, if we actually took. It, it doesn't mean it's mixed use. It's pretty damn finite. It's five hundred feet.
It's not a big area.
It's a small area, actually, right? And so our own emphasis in doing that was to allow different forms of, of had. So now that you say that, that wouldn't exactly have been what we foresaw or desired.
Yeah.
If someone put us.
Well, yeah, I mean, I agree with Jay that the mixed areas are, you know, the areas that were either rural, residential or rural. And so I don't think we want, you know, we listed the types of things that wouldn't be okay for businesses there, and, but I don't think storage facilities would. Certainly wasn't in my contemplation, but.
No, but I.
I, I think we should.
I don't feel, I don't have a feeling for how we resolve this question.
Well, there's certainly storage facilities all over town. You know, there's nothing, there's, there's nothing this document can do about it, it's just really, we're, we're trying to, to the extent that this is enforceable and will be enforceable. We're only trying to, to affect new construction.
But this is a large footprint storage facility, isn't it, Dan?
I can't think of one.
It's like barns and stuff, but.
Well, there's, well, that's different.
Yeah.
Because it matches the surroundings and all that.
I'm thinking of those things where you get, they look like the containers all attached together, you can drive in.
Oh, okay. And they, they, you know, they suck up land.
I was thinking about big barns, I mean, if you could look at the, you know, like the, the snowmobile place down at the interchange. The, you know, that was, you know, they had the shop, you know, the showroom was up front. And then, then there was the, the, you know, the hardware part of it.
Right.
Then the whole back of it was, you know, a pretty big storage facility, wasn't it? Or was the.
They tell you, you can talk about the junkyard. Yeah, yeah, oh, no, no, that was a shop. Okay. Yeah, they worked on the machines.
But it's a potential storage facility now.
Sure it is.
All right, and so.
It hasn't been precluded from.
No, and I don't think we, but it's also, nothing would be read in here.
But it's there.
It's there. That's right. There, but they would still need an Act two fifty permit whoever comes into there. And doesn't, and isn't inheriting the, you know, that business, they want to convert the use of that property to get an Act two fifty permit. So I don't think we said, we didn't prohibit storage facilities in that area, you did, if you recall, if you did.
I mean, I can look it up. Well, it, it would make no sense in those, I don't know, it's not that many acres that we've added in. And I would think it would be absurd to allow a large. Storage facility to take up, suck up most of what we've considered to be mixed use.
Oh, a new, a new storage, yes, oh, no, I agree with you on the mixed use, I'm, I'm talking about the interchange.
What, what, what did we designate interchange as?
Pretty much as is.
But what, what, what area is called into?
It's just that one corner where all the stuff is now, across from the park.
But what is, is it, is it mixed use?
It's a dumb thing.
It's close as any to mixed use.
It's the interchange district.
The interchange, even though it's not, it strikes me as being much closer to industrial than it does.
Not really, not, not the way we have it, it's much closer to mixed use.
The barn is all apartments now.
Yeah, but don't, don't confuse the issue by saying the excuse, because it is, it, mixed use is its own thing.
Yes.
It's, the interchange is not mixed use.
Yeah, he was, I think you were asking how, which, which areas are.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was thinking, that building, I certainly would want to build residential. In that footprint where the deer always was.
But if you tore that down, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a bad place for.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, if you tore that down, you're.
Sure.
Close access.
But a good architect can come in and figure out how to.
Yeah.
Start it.
Okay.
No, I'm with you, okay.
So what are we thinking? About these places, about the storage facility, is it going down to the industrial area?
It's, it's not prohibited in the industrial area now.
It's not?
No, it's not, and so the, that's where we would want.
Right.
Right, but we have to, I mean, is that, is that an accurate statement, that that's what we want to have? I mean, you brought up storage facilities, I think that that's a good, a good thing to bring up, because that is something.
Well, see, it's, it's, a storage facility is a commercial establishment.
Yeah.
So. As a commercial establishment. We said we don't want McDonald's and those kinds of things in particular places. Joe, and just not add, uh, storage facilities?
Okay, I thought you were coming from the opposite direction, but if you want to specifically keep storage facilities added, yeah, we can easily do that, just pencil it in.
What else? Because you've got to think about.
Well, there's a lot of stuff that we, we specifically said we don't want in mixed use.
So we should think about, so let me ask you this. If we, just think about Sunny Moon Park.
Yeah.
I don't think they went deeper than five hundred feet, which is what we're allowed, okay? How many acres was that parcel?
The one down below?
Yeah.
Oh, sixteen, seventeen?
Sixteen, seventeen.
Something like that.
You could build. An aging center there. A building that would house the elderly, you could put an apartment in there, you could put. Homes in there, you could put in duplexes, quadplexes, triplexes.
And you physically could, or you could.
No, what, what I'm saying is, would we consider sixteen acres? Of mixed use, too much to use for something like that, because again, what we were really contemplating. Was other than single family homes, but residential, and maybe a store too, or a yoga center, or some, something like that, you know?
Yeah.
In, where, where we got ground level retail in rez above it. So that's where we were coming from, and we didn't really. We didn't have this conversation.
No, no, and I, that, that crossed my mind as we were doing this, like, what about a, a, a community care home or nursing facility?
So, so would, would, would we be okay, because we said, yeah, a little market would be okay, but if someone took up sixteen acres. Of what is a pretty small mixed use acreage total?
Yeah.
Would, would we be okay with it?
I wouldn't be. But we. Because that's, that's. If, if, if we're thinking. If we're thinking that we wanted the mixed use, so that we created some more opportunities. For, uh, single family mixed use along Route five and twelve. We could lose. We could lose land. In that area if someone put up a storage facility.
Yeah, and there is no more. Land that readily lends itself to the excuse, we went through that, that was.
Certainly not along Route twelve, Route five, beyond what we've already done, but that still leaves. Hartland, Hartland Creature Road, we haven't looked at that. That's the other, that's another.
Yeah, Brownsville Road, Brownsville Road, Brownsville County and.
No, Brownsville Road, I mean, isn't that much, it's, you know, when you look at it, it's a steep hill going up, there's a little bit there. Part of, part of Creature is the one, if you're looking to really expand. Just saying.
Well, I know, we did put in, as a, as a recommendation on mixed use areas, that, that we might want to. Or on rural residential areas, that we would want to, that we would consider reevaluating. Districts on, on existing town pay roads.
Right.
And that, and so I think that's, it's just take it as it comes, and that's, that's what I can create.
Yeah.
But that's what we did.
Yeah.
So we're still okay with that.
Yeah.
Geez, that's weird. So clear, let me finish that section.
The mixed use, the mixed use area policies and the rural residential, they talk about dwelling use.
Well, yeah.
But, and, but I did, this came, you know, and then there's, and then there's, um, commercial things. A nursing home is clearly commercial, but it's also a dwelling. Yeah, and so, so, you know, that was what I was wondering, you know, but I.
Wow.
In mental.
Well, if.
But we wanted what it was.
But wait a second, because any. Like, if we think about. Rent homes, I don't care whether they're. Duplexes or small apartment buildings. All of those are commercial endeavors, but the purpose is habitation.
I don't think they're commercial endeavors, if you're constructing housing, that doesn't meet the definition of a commercial thing to Act two fifty.
Oh, I'm, I, I.
Which is really all we.
That's all we're really focusing on, okay.
But a nursing home is, is, you know, that's Act two fifty triggered right off the bat, so.
What about, what about a. A property that's designed for assisted living or aging or memory loss?
It's a business, it's, it's, yeah, it's not.
See, that clearly has come up in, in the survey. People were concerned about lack of resources for the aging.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So I would say, working on the maps, I think we added seventy-five acres. You know, from mixed use, I don't think it's nearly that.
It's not a lot, but there's, but, you know, but if you get the right.
But if we went back, you know, it's another, it's another effort. If we went back on the Hartland Creature Road, just like we did, we, we looked at each and every property to say, wait a minute. How, how steep a slope is it on, how dense is it packed, how many existing home industries there are? Just saying.
Yeah, or we put it in rural, so we're really, what's there is there, we can't, we're not going to, you know, undo anything, but we've got to. It's just what comes in in the future.
We're not going to do anything unless we do something.
Yeah, but we have it, but as long as it's in a rural area, that's the most restricted area, so. I mean, I don't think, I, I wouldn't want to get, I would rather define the rural area by what you can't do than what you can do, so we'll just be there all day. But I think that if you're looking at something like a hybrid thing, like, like community care homes or nursing homes. There's a policy, you know, people might want to have a, something like that in town. You know, is that something we should consider? And we're easy enough, we wouldn't have to draw the maps again, we just have to make a, you know, mention it in the, and what, what's in or what's out.
Well, but you couldn't put it in the rural district.
No, not in the rural district, right.
So you would have to.
As, as it stands now.
As it stands.
Right, but we did put in the rural district, we did put, um, that the, in the mixed use district, we did say that we would evaluate certain paved roads. For future, for changing, because there's nothing in here that can't be amended, so.
Yes, are, are we in the future?
So we'll use your crystal ball.
So I'm coming back to it, what are we going to do with it?
Are you talking, are you on storage or have you moved to this?
Oh, no, I'm, we're still thinking storage.
Storage. It, it's something that if we did. Wait, I'll just throw this out, you know, but let's say we get to the. Here is, or even before that, when somebody comes in and says, well, what about a nursing home, you know, or, you know, we, we always, we, all we hear about is the facilities for the, and Hartland should be, you should be able to age in place, you know, if there was a local nursing home, wouldn't that be great? Maybe, so the, um, so we could say that we've at least kept it open, that we would reconsider, so we could wait for.
Something to happen.
Yeah, rather than encourage it, but we wouldn't, but we're not writing, because we've left ourselves enough room to, like, to, to.
Have we?
Yes, I think we have, in the mixed use.
Yeah.
We have it in rural, well, we have it rural, even there, because we, the rural areas along the paved roads. Yeah, you couldn't put a nursing home up on Garvin Hill.
Correct, I'm, I'm thinking differently of what a nursing, I wasn't envisioning a nursing.
Well, can you care?
Well, yeah, and, and so if you look, what, so if you, you know that, um, Center for Assisted Living, they built downtown White River?
Yeah.
It's pretty big. Much bigger than I think.
It's a great, have you been there?
Yeah, it's a great place. It's, this is my feeling, and so, now, again.
Going hardly can afford.
Well, well, but it's not just that, it's not, I don't even know that the infrastructure could support a building like that. But we would be okay with that, right? That's, that to me is, that's, that's all about residential. In caring about people.
It is, but think about where that is in White River, I'm just writing this to the.
Well, it's in a village, well, that's.
In the village.
But it would be our village.
We don't have anything like that in our villages, so if something, if you took that structure, put it in, in our village, that would be pretty radical.
I'm thinking like three, a three-story.
Yeah, there are smaller ones.
But, but, I mean, I, I did think that that was, first off, we're not solving any problems. The whole thrust of it was to not put impediments in front of someone who could creatively solve and thought there was an economic basis.
Right.
For providing something that would be beneficial to the community. And see, I, I just think things like that are clearly beneficial to the community. Unless we're importing people from New York City or something, because they want.
Well, you know, part of that might be. I hesitate to say this quite this way, but I will.
Dan, don't preclude the farm and wilderness old folks home. Go over, go over to the river road in Plainfield and check that place out, it used to be part of the Home Hill.
Yeah.
As far as.
Oh, oh, it's something new.
Oh, it's been, well, why?
Yeah, no, I know what you mean, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lovely place in the woods, so there's nothing wrong with, you know, I'm not saying put it on Garland Hill. But there's nothing wrong with a retirement community to come into a, a more.
But you're right, that road is not much better than Garland.
No, it is true, it is. Is it paved or dirt?
It's dirt, it's dirt.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Which, which was.
Well. What happened?
Yeah, I bike over there all the time, so what will go?
So, so if somebody went out, if somebody went out Route twelve, cross from the fire station. Somewhere in those fields back there, and there's quite a field out in the background, a little ridge, and wanted to build an old folks home in that corner. We wouldn't oppose that, that was certainly my vision, and that place would support such.
Yeah, I mean.
Where were we?
Cross from the fire station.
Oh.
In the outfield.
You mean the, the pole proper?
No, I mean, uh, the big stuff that used to be, uh.
You mean on the prime farm, the prime agricultural soils?
The, the, the place that used to be Graham's farm with the Highland town. The Red House, the Red Farmers, Durfee's house.
Yeah, but there's no, it probably wouldn't happen because of floods, you know, that, there's a lot of problems with that land, you know, there's no, no water, so.
It's not going to happen.
It won't, it won't happen.
I'm just using it as an example.
But at least, as an example, scenario, that is an example, forget about these issues.
So if someone came, if we had, if we had a system where they had to come to the select board to ask, rather than Act two fifty. If they had to come to the select board and explain that project, would we oppose something like that? In the, in the proper location, I mean.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter to oppose it.
No, no, but he, he's talking hypothetically.
Yeah.
Like, if it didn't have those obstacles.
So if somebody went into a mixed use area and wanted to put in a four-story or a three-story. Uh, hundred square foot old age home. Would we just kind of sit back and let it happen? Or would we?
Well, they would need a, they'd need an Act two fifty permit.
Yeah, you know, we'd have to do that, we'd have to go back in and look at the town plan and see what we've said.
Yeah, but these, but remember, Act two fifty, the town plan part is just one little section, number ten. Anybody's putting a thing like that here. Anybody's putting a thing like that here isn't gonna get by Act two fifty for.
But Danny, but that is not the other stuff. All we said is we would encourage, would, uh, not, we wouldn't even encourage.
I wanna check something. It was my understanding that if the select board had the proper ordinance. The control comes to the select board rather than Act two fifty, Act two fifty is not involved.
That's true.
Right, and so.
No, no, it's not true.
That's not true.
That is not true.
That's educated.
What happens is, if there is an ordinance, okay?
Yeah.
Then what happens first is the, the local town plan and the planning commission. Approve it, if they approve it, then it goes the next step to Act two fifty. And you need two permits to build, one from the state, one from the town. If a town does not have an ordinance, Act two fifty is the only route.
Well, that's why we're spending so much time.
Well, then it gets.
Well, I know that.
It gets worked out somehow, well, it, it, if you have two different bodies, and one said you can do X, Y, and Z. And the other said you could do A, B, and C, well, there's gotta be a meeting of the, of minds there of what you can do. But an ordinance, a town with an ordinance also has Act two fifty considerations.
So I didn't realize. Yeah, so, so the answer, yeah, same question is, it wouldn't matter at the town level, what we thought of it, it's either in the town, within the town ordinance or without. And, you know, it would only be if the select board would consider an exception, or, and that's, any ordinance would probably have, usually has, um. What do you call them, variances?
Yeah.
Which we would probably couldn't.
Dave.
Well, it would come here first, then go.
Dave, think of it this way.
Yeah.
There are, in, in the Act two fifty process, there are questions that an applicant has to answer. Some that have to do with local considerations.
Yeah.
And other with statewide, uh, business. So one deals more with the statewide issue than Act two fifty. The ordinance deals more with the local things, but, but you need both in the end.
But isn't there pressure to change to, isn't that almost a foregone conclusion?
You better hold your breath, I'm having.
Well, I'm just saying that it is a ton of pressure on housing specifically in the state.
Yes.
In, in the people that live here, unless you're fortunate enough to have means, it's pretty tough to speak to them then. The state's gonna be under pressure to do that.
Yeah, but I, I don't think they're gonna start putting housing on floodplains.
No, 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 I mean, that's just foolishness, but I mean, when, when you say, if you put up an apartment building. Or if you put up something that benefits the community, the residents here. I just feel that they'd be more receptive to those proposals than they would a commercial endeavor.
Well, that may or may not be, uh. And that'll have to develop on some.
You understand the other side of the coin as far as if a town has an ordinance.
Well, flip the coin.
If a town has an ordinance and the town votes against it, it's done, because Act two fifty won't act on. On an, on a town that rejected the project because of the ordinance. So, you know, it's a, in one way, it's a single way street.
That kinda goes to the point we're making.
Yeah.
That means that two fifty wouldn't come into play.
Yeah, well.
Well, if the town voted against it, yeah.
Well, then the project's out anyways.
Yeah.
It's gone, that's why it's important, I think, for the town to develop an ordinance. Because, because on one hand, the ordinance is written locally. And it's voted on people in the town that wrote the document, that know the details of things. Uh, that's very important, and so if we hated something, it's not, it's not gonna pass, there's no automatic. Town plan involvement in the Act two fifty process, ain't there? But I really think the town ought to just write an ordinance for simple things.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't, it doesn't have to go any further than we, we, we've really done, and, I mean, that. We tried to make it an Act two fifty ordinance, you know, that's what we're after here.
Yeah, but couldn't you write an ordinance out of the town plan?
Well, the, the town, actually, if you think of the process, when we, before we do a town plan, we always ask. We do a survey.
Yeah.
What do people want in town, and they came back and they say, we love Heartland the way it is, keep it the same. So then we sit back and we create the town plan.
Correct.
Once you have a town plan that states policy, then it's much easier to do an ordinance in town. Because you know sort of the way of the norm.
Yeah, there'd be nothing in here that would stop the town from doing an ordinance.
Okay.
Well, thanks for your patience, Dan, I'm sorry. But then, you asked about, we did have a thing on a rural residential area recommendation, that this is proposed. Certain areas in power, and along paved roads, now designated as rural areas, may be reevaluated for designation as a rural residential area. Depending on future housing patterns, demands, and goals.
Yeah.
So, so I think we left ourselves, that was the out, we were leaving ourselves.
Okay.
Under Act two fifty, you know, because we could just not oppose an Act two fifty application based on that.
Okay.
There's no one that said, oh, no, well, you put it in there, you have to oppose it, you know, why aren't you opposing it, so, so this sort of like a, a pre, a relief valve.
Yeah, yeah, it's necessary, yes.
I feel better about it.
So if you wanted a project, a nursing home.
But the nursing home is in, yeah, we haven't.
Well, wait a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just saying, if that's what you would really like to see, and you wrote an ordinance, the town wrote an ordinance that said. We love nursing homes and elderly projects, and you define where they can be specifically. Uh, then, the town, the, the permit would come before the town, the town would say, we love it, right? And then it would go.
Probably would.
And then it would go to Act two fifty for other, more statewide issues.
Yeah, I mean, the way we've got it now, we've probably, it would, this is in the mixed use area now, that to preserve residential aspect of these areas. The following limitations shall also apply, such businesses must be.
Yeah.
Similar in design, no greater in scale than existing nearby buildings, that's to me.
That's a nursing home right there.
Yeah. You know, so do we wanna, you know, we would have to put in, if we wanted to go for community care home or nursing homes, we would have to. Get pretty specific, not that, and it wouldn't be that difficult, but we would have to do it.
If we want.
If we want to, that's for.
This is, this is the pain we ask with the Sonny project, because now, the governor is a little conservative, you know? And so he picks the judges, and next thing we know, our town plan means nothing, nothing.
We're already.
It's gonna change, and not only.
That's what we're trying to fix.
Wait a minute, no, but you know what, we still have the judge and jury.
There's always that.
Always that, but worse yet, they also screwed the regional planning commission because of village designations. So we've lost so much ground because of Sonny Need, or at least how the court ruled in that case.
Yeah. But the Supreme Court hasn't ruled, yeah.
That's correct.
And I don't think the Supreme Court is subject to those same kind of pressures.
Or they don't, who, who selects the Supreme Court justices?
It's a recommendation by the bar, it's a little bit.
I understand, I understand.
There's, there's still some merit.
Wow, guys, yeah. Let's, uh.
All right, so the.
Let's not swear at the life preserve.
Okay, so that's where we are with, with housing outside, housing outside.
Yeah.
Outside the, the rural residential areas and in, in nursing homes or those kind of commercials.
I feel a little better about, you know, the large parking lots.
Right, you mind if I ask Phil?
I don't care what you do.
What, 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 what would your feeling be, I just off the top of your head about nursing homes and, you know, or, or community care, you know, would it depend on the scale or? If just as a straight up yes or no thing?
I think they're important, you know, I have members of my own family that in the past had lodgers for nursing. Uh, but I'm also struck with, uh, the. And, and the class four road, um. Eight years ago, ten years ago, we had a home for regular youths. And, you know, people that, they used that went through the court system, and they didn't quite go to jail, they went to this home. And that happened, and that was quite a debacle, and there is no stopping that, um.
Which, which property was it?
That was the old Mitchell place?
The John Dunn house.
The what?
The John Dunn house.
I don't know.
What on the, on the, on the old.
Yeah, I know where you're talking about, but I can't, like, there's no property.
John.
Yeah, yeah.
How's about that?
It's where I believe the state trooper lives.
Yes.
Right now.
Oh, okay.
Way up in the middle of nowhere, and what happened?
Oh, way up there.
Yeah, but these kids would run away and they would come to Phil's house, they would go to. It was, it was a complete disaster.
People break out of nursing homes.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, I think you have to dissociate between delinquents and elderly people.
Well, I, I, I just, you asked for a.
I asked for a. Exactly what I wanted.
So, married my third laundry year.
Well.
But I, I, I agree with John, I put pressure at the state level and, and, um. You know, just what we see, you know. You know, the, the terrorists or whatever it's called, the White River Junction is extremely expensive.
Right.
Um, and, and, so where's the middle ground?
Well, that's, and if you can make a buck doing it, I think you could, I do wanna make a distinction with the nursing homes, because there. I see that as having medical aspects to it, I'm not thinking that, I'm, I'm, I'm definitely thinking. Where.
Assistant living or whatever.
E, e, exactly, and someone, I mean, I look at our neighbors, you know, as you get up into your eighties. You can't maintain damn eighty acres anymore, and he's.
Right, but what physically would you wanna, would you think would be good, or what would be going too far in terms of, let's say, we all agree that that would be.
I don't see a big facility, I see a facility and I think just the infrastructure. It has to be, because we said we want to maintain integrity, yeah.
Now, what about, uh, uh, oh, gosh, down in, on this cutting border, uh, Cedar, Man.
Well, that was pretty big.
It's pretty big now, but it wasn't when I was a kid. Um, at some level, that was just a small, small facility, and now over the years.
It has expanded.
It's expanded, and then they added the assisted living. Where you can live at five thousand dollars a month, yeah. Yeah, um, is that, is that too big? Well, anything like that here would be right, right in your face, you know, Cedar Hill, you, you know, you have to know what's there, you know?
Well, we have limited. In our definition, we've limited the potential footprint.
Not so much the footprint.
You don't think so?
It's more the, the, um, in keeping with what's there already, we have no footprint limitations.
But, but we've got five hundred feet more or less, right?
Oh, oh, footprint on the property, I've got my footprint.
It, it really kinda limits what you can build.
But.
You're right, you could go vertical, we don't want vertical.
They do have a vertical.
Yeah, 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 so, I, I don't know, but. Part of it, part of it, I think, has to be addressing the developing needs. People who live here, as well as people who want it, you know, so you've got, it's all over. But if you think the two distinct groups, certainly young people. It's a struggle, right, to, to perhaps live here, and we already saw the demographics, this is an older town.
Yeah, it is. We're an old town in, in an already old state.
Yes, yeah, and, and so. I mean, the alternative, people fend for themselves, and we're, we're not taking responsibility for anyone, we're just.
No, but.
Open to somebody.
They have to be conscious about encouraging this kind of stuff, so, we wanna be careful that we know. Inadvertently exclude stuff, you know.
Would you define it as an over fifty community or?
Us?
Well, I mean.
Like a trailer park?
No.
Oh, you're talking about, you're, you're talking about residential communities.
Yeah. I, I.
Yeah, I didn't envision a residential, I, I honestly didn't, because. Though, those tend to require scale, or they tend to have scale.
They're almost like villages.
I was just trying to use that term.
In some California, there's incorporated towns that are nothing but.
Yeah.
New Jersey.
Yes.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, Laguna Woods is a place in California, it's famous, they wanted to build a thing, and it's, there was an unincorporated area, so. They incorporated, now, that's that, that's the city of Laguna Woods.
The Thompson Senior Center has a number of, um. Staff that are kind of just spending their time on alternative housing, the idea of. Can someone, can your house someone, or two people, or put up stuff up in your backyard to. But I, I, I just look in, I can't find my notes on that.
Yeah, I, I'd be curious about that.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be an Act two fifty, it would have to be, I think it's an issue in Woodstock, because there's town ordinances, how many families can live in a certain place. Which we don't have, so if they want to come here and do it, there'd be nothing stopping anybody from doing it, unless somebody took the stand that, well, we're not gonna allow that. But it's not an Act two fifty requirement, if you wanted to do that, any individual wanted to do that.
The, uh, Department of Commerce. Has some plans that they provide for, or they're discussing. How to create opportunities for the community for additional apartments and that kind of stuff, yeah. Um. Uh, yeah, I sent out a video with Becca White.
Yeah.
And the fellow from, uh, Two Rivers.
Yeah, Tebles.
Yeah, and so I went to that site and looked up some stuff, of course, and, uh. In terms of increasing housing.
Yeah, and there's no, and there's no prohibition doing that in the rural areas here, if people wanna do that.
Yeah, right, that's true.
Right, right, so, yeah, that was. Mother-in-law apartment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or accessory.
Accessories only, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we don't have any thoughts about that, do we?
And I don't really want to.
I don't think, I don't think it falls within the jurisdiction.
I'm sorry, I'm being a bit of a knucklehead. Yeah, no, but we all, but there is, there is, there is some recommendation stuff and goal stuff that we wanna encourage houses, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't, we certainly haven't discouraged it.
Okay. All right. All right, are we done with the town plan for now? We've got some chores ahead of us.
All right, so I'll have next week, by next week, I'll, I'll try to fix up that goals and.
Yeah, and, uh, I'll send out the electricity, or the energy, and then I'll clean up my stuff and change it.
On that, on that front. I think that anytime, something has to go out, that is just like a copy of a. Of a town plan article, something that doesn't need interpretation or commentary. I think the clerk should just send it out, so it doesn't come from you with his questions back, by somebody, just send it to him. And be, and I think the clerk should done it.
So you already sent it to you, and you send stuff out?
No, I know what to send.
Yeah.
But I think when it comes to, um, other business, where you have to interact, then you should be the person. That, uh, sends out information that has, you know, a, a, a little more detail, or a little more.
Okay, yeah.
Personal business about the planning commission, but just keep the straight stuff to the clerk, whoever the clerk is, I know I am at the moment, but.
Well, I don't understand, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm dense tonight, yes, I don't understand what you're telling me, what should I send, what shouldn't I, do you think?
You shouldn't send anything.
I shouldn't send anything?
No, you told me what they, well, we agreed tonight, that we would just, without comment. Send them a section of the town plan that dealt with communication towers, period, that's it.
Right.
And you shouldn't send it, it should go out from the clerk. And you shouldn't send it, it should go out from the clerk with no, no two cents added, just a straight.
Well, I thought he was talking about his section.
Yeah, no, no, I, no, he's talking, yeah.
No, no, but, and on the issue earlier, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll send it. So you're gonna send out about the cell tower, what the town plan says about it, what the, exactly, the section in the town plan.
We're doing work, no additional interpretation.
No interpretation.
Left to the eye of the reader.
Exactly, straight away.
Okay.
Unless you're a fool, you should understand what the intent is.
Okay. Phil, is there anything in particular you wanted to tell us tonight? Are you running for governor or anything?
I don't know.
Okay, that's resolved. Alright, okay.
Wouldn't start here if you.
You know, I'm being a little harsh. So, um. Well, I could, yeah, and I, I'll, I owe you a donation, and I'd rather owe you a cheat sheet. Okay, anything else, guys?
Um, I have one.
Yeah, what's up?
Somebody needs to write a blurb for the town report.
Right.
Thanks.
About what?
So I sent out, I sent out a reminder that everybody needs to submit their. Disagreement paragraph about what their committee or commission wanted during the year.
I've done masters, I, I can do it, because I've got the last year's.
Cool, are you? You're talking, you're talking five months ahead here.
No, that's what we needed, that they.
I have to print them.
Yeah.
So it seems like it's five months ahead, but if I can get it, um.
This year?
November twenty, yeah, November twenty something. I start putting everything into.
Well, if you want to take it on, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, I've got it wrong, it's just an updated thing.
So simple, we just, yeah, so.
I think even last year, we worked on the town plan at this time, so it doesn't need much.
Yeah, that's, in some, and even I, I, um, yeah.
We do have one final thing here. We did discuss in old business about a press release. And. Yes, do we want to resolve that tonight or not?
Uh, no, but I have, I have copies to hand out.
Okay.
You need me on this, too.
Yeah, right.
Yes, I started it, uh, yesterday morning, I finished it just before six o'clock, I sent Dan a quick one. And, um, and so just realize, it's, uh, you know, it's fresh. Two pages, it will give you some thoughts about.
Yeah, I've read it.
Yeah, you did.
And I was sitting on the back step reading.
Anyways, there's a, there's a few things that need to be fact checked, uh, if you don't like it, you know.
Seems lengthy. Seems lengthy, but you're making the case.
Making a case. I don't think, it's not like you to use so many words. Well, that was, I told you and I sent it to you, I said you would have mercy on me.
She said it about me.
Minimal editing. Whenever, when you edit it, you always subtract words.
And then I wanted to ask you. That missive that you sent out, uh, which I saw for the first time, which was about, uh, our appeal directly to Springfield. Is that something that, uh. Should be made available to the select board?
They, they would pardon stuff, so they would have gotten.
Yeah, but I don't know if the new guys did.
Well, I mean, the select board has a body, kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, uh, no, I don't know if individual select boards have, and members have read it. No. But it's, but they already have the document.
Okay, oh, okay, anything else, guys?
Will you do me a favor, please?
What?
Will you take what I sent you and slash it, dash it, send it back so Dan and I can get back and come up with the next version?
Okay.
What's your deadline?
I'm sorry?
What's, what's your deadline?
The next medium.
When is the next?
Do you want to meet next Wednesday?
I suppose. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna be here, but I.
I don't think anybody's gonna be here, because Dr. Phil is traveling, Steve.
Steve won't be here?
Won't be here, he might.
We could go back to the first Wednesday, which would be the following, the first Wednesday of the month.
November sixth is the next.
Yeah, okay. Any, any other thoughts?
And you were not gonna be there, you said.
Oh, I won't be here, I'm not gonna be here until, back again until December, so, but I'm gonna try to be able to do it in, um. By Zoom, but, yeah, but with a two or three hour time difference, it could, that could be covered.
What about the other guys, who may be here in two weeks, they should.
Steve will be back.
Because we need, after next, we need five.
I'm not sure if George is back.
But I have five people.
Rebecca?
Is she about to go out?
It's a question.
Well, she saw those.
She stayed for an hour.
She won.
I, I, I was still on camera, so, um, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Uh, wait, did we agree when we're meeting?
Six.
Wednesday, yeah.
I was, okay.
On the sixth?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, oh, that's the day, that's election day.
No.
No, day after, day after.
Yes, we're gonna be in a great mood, we'll see.
Which inspires.
Okay, so on the sixth, right, HPC. I can be here.
But yeah, that's how we'll remember, yeah.
We'll see what our mood is.
Now I do need.
Okay.
Polls in favor?
Bye.
Opposed? You have an opinion?
No, I'm still thinking, but I think.